Hey, what's up, what's up, what's up, guys? Hello, 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 here we are again, we are live again. We're live again and tomorrow, just before tomorrow's class, because our class is starting tomorrow, the season three. Remember, season three Airdrops is starting tomorrow, okay? Although we had a big class on April.
Again, we are live again.
April what?
We're live again and tomorrow, just before tomorrow's class.
Because our class. Ah, here, let me, let me mute this.
Season.
Let me mute myself, so again, uh, once again. Our big class will be on April twenty seven and twenty eight, right? Saturday and Sunday, is that right? Did I get that right? Fifth, six, yes, fifth, six, six, six thirteen, twenty, yeah, twenty seven, twenty eight. Our big class will be on twenty seven, twenty eight, April twenty seven, twenty eight, correct? April twenty seven and twenty eight, but guys got to remember. Guys got to remember tomorrow is really start of the season, because we do not want. Again, I repeat, we do not want the small guys, we do not want the noobs to be caught, okay? We want to give the new to something, yes, new hairstyle, I'm more handsome today. We do not want the noobs to be late and tomorrow, there's going to be a lot of things. Even for Li Ye, that Li Ye does not know, but tomorrow he will know something and he will be shocked. The two dimensional thing, okay, you gotta look into two dimension, remember, this is season two. It's harder and harder, hence, we gotta get cleverer and cleverer to do this, but we've done this before, right? Done this before during twenty twenty one, D Y D X, where we had to be extremely clever. But the first generation Airdrops, we did not have to be clever, we just had to do something. And even though you did something easy, let me repeat, you did something easy, you did something really stupid, you got the airdrop. But for the second season, and we've seen this before, D Y D X, we gotta be more clever, we gotta work harder, okay? We gotta work harder, so April twenty eighth is the big class, okay, I just want to tell you, but before that. We have a small class every week, starting tomorrow, because I want you guys to do something, so that the noobs. By the time they are going to be ready by April twenty seven, twenty eight, they'll be ready to go, go, go. And to do really sophisticated things with this, okay? But anyway, for the, for the seniors, well, you know, we're not going to stop you, I'm not going to stop you. Although the weekly classes are for the juniors or for the noobs, or the guys who are coming in, you can go ahead and. And I'll show you what to do, I'll show you what to do, it's quite complicated. Uh, I'll give you the instructions on, on how to do things, but, but the noobs don't do it, okay? Please don't do it, don't get too far ahead of yourselves. Yourselves is to use this period to establish your wallet and really tomorrow is going to be like this, you know this? Uh, who, who has heard of the Malay thing, goyang kaki, you know? Tomorrow, let me tell you what it's, it's all about, it's tomorrow, guys, it's going to be goyang kaki like this. Goyang kaki is the goyang kaki way, okay? You know, last time we had to work hard, now unbelievable to you, we have the goyang kaki methodology, guys, the goyang kaki methodology. I need new shoes, hey, I need new shoes, so remember. We are going towards a goyang kaki methodology, yes. Goyang kaki, guys, it's goyang kaki, no joke, so let's get started. What I want to talk about today, which is what are you gonna do with your money anyway? Congratulations for everyone, man, what a big airdrop wormhole was. So you guys got between, wow, I'm so happy for you guys, like between five thousand and one hundred fifty thousand US, totally crazy. Between five thousand US and one hundred and fifty thousand US, probably making. Hey, guys, definitely making Sensei's course the fastest in history. To make money for people, there's no class like Sensei's class to make money for people, like, it just does not exist. It just does not exist, so thank you, thank you, thank you very much for giving that, that, that awesome thing. Thank, totally awesome, guys, totally, totally awesome, okay? So we gotta, we gotta do it again, okay, we're gonna do it again, so again, uh. What we're gonna do today is really, I just want you guys to realize. Where do you go from now? What are you gonna do with the wormhole thing? Are you gonna buy, uh, what? Are you gonna buy a BMW? Some of you can't afford BMW nowadays, some of you can. Uh, are you gonna buy a house? Are you gonna look for a wife? Okay, sensitive issue, what are you gonna do with that money? And a lot of people, this is for tomorrow's class, again, for tomorrow's class, uh, don't forget tomorrow's class, okay? You may already be a millionaire, but tomorrow we start getting the mullah, but. Again, I want to make you realize what it really is, because I know you're not sure, right? You're not sure, because you're about to enter the big leagues now. And it's, it's a wholly, it's a whole different story as you enter the big leagues. You're not, you're not in the little league anymore, okay, you're not in the little league, so. You gotta act like you are in the big league and that, I think, is, uh, extremely, extremely important. Because if you act like you're in the little league, then you're gonna leave a lot of things on the table. But anyway, who wants to join us tomorrow? Again, the class is, uh, tomorrow, don't miss it, I give you guys a seventy five dollars if you sign up before tomorrow night, midnight. Uh, so don't worry, I get one hundred dollars for the guys who did sign before Tuesday night. So tomorrow, I gotta sign before that, uh, let me put it in, uh, our YouTube here, yeah, here it is. So again, that's the price there, you see there, that's, that, 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 that is the price there, yes, there it is. There it is, there it is, join Sensei in the next journey, yeah, there it is, there it is, guys, that's one price. And then I also have a prize in, uh, this one, right? There's also a prize here, that, that is in this, uh, and then we also have a prize for Stripe, you want to pay by Stripe, it is there, but don't miss it, okay, guys? Let me, hey, just as the people in the group, if you miss, you're really rugi bazaar, you know, I, I, I don't even know what you're doing. Guys, my class is the fastest class ever to deliver the mullah to people. And when you talk about the percentage return, if I didn't have my class, I do not even know how I'll beat my class. I mean, I'd like to say, Sensei, you are a genius, I mean, seriously, seriously, I would say that, I would say that, I would really, really say that, okay? And we have also special, because we are also giving you guys this, we want more people in. We are also giving you guys a three X payment if you want to, so don't, don't miss it, if not. I fear, I fear that you guys are definitely going through that, and congratulations for all the mullah here. Like, yay, this is one of my wormhole wallets here, yeah, you can even stake for nine, 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 nine percent, guys. Like one thousand percent for you, that is totally crazy, okay? But we come here today and I know you guys want to see the worm, right? Okay, well, we just want to see the worm, let's see, hey, what is the worm delivering us today? What is the worm, well, that is it, so, oh, Bitcoin is up again. So Bitcoin has been struggling all this time, so you guys are wondering, hey, what is gonna happen now? What is gonna happen now? Are we gonna correct, what is the cycle? Well, as I've always said, Hari Raya, I think we go into a bullish mode and then. After Hari Raya, we drop as per the cycle, but you want to know, hey, but that's Bitcoin. What happens to the rest of the market is something that I know you guys want to know, what's, 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 what's gonna happen to the rest of the market? Because I think that is the most important thing, because not, we, we play a lot of things, that, don't, we, we don't, we don't really play Bitcoins, we play. A lot of other things and you guys need to know that, so. I'm gonna answer that question to you, but we want to know, yeah, you guys want to know what your wormhole is, right? I know, our wormhole has fallen, got dumped, because you guys sold it. I know you guys got so much money, you guys waited for it to dump, and then when it went up, you guys dumped it again, man, you guys are cruel. You guys have to begin collected profit because of Hari Raya, okay, I forgive you guys. I kind of forgive you guys, okay, gotta forgive you guys, because you guys are collecting. You guys are collecting, ah, you don't have to sell, cool, cool, cool. Ah, yes, a single asset deposit, so awesome, guys, awesome, what, what a day, man, what a day, man, what a day, like. Like totally awesome day, right? So the thing is now, I want to ask you, like, what's next? Where, where do you go next? What, what, what are you gonna do next? And I think this is, uh, very, very key, again, don't forget our class, okay, please join our class, uh, don't be shy, okay, don't, don't be shy. Don't forget to be joining our class, because this is, could be your last chance, this is gonna be the biggest airdrop season ever. If the cycle is correct. This airdrop season, whether you believe it or not, requires a different approach, but it's gonna be bigger than the past one. And I'm clearly layer zero and all that, right? This is gonna be bigger than that, if it follows the cycle, okay, if it follows the cycle, I think you'll start getting your rewards. And those who join us will start getting rich in August, those who are already rich now will get even richer in August, so. You can jolila, I guess you can go jolly your, 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 what? Your ill-gotten gains, okay, your ill-gotten gains, okay? You can start jolila your ill-gotten gains, because you're gonna get it again sometime in August, that's what I think. Of course, last time I was wrong, I was wrong, and you guys got it early, right? Man, you guys are so happy, I really thought this would happen in May, I had no idea. I really thought this would happen in May, but man, you guys have gotten it so early, so. I think that's very good and this is why that we really cannot, you know. Uh, yeah, we, we really, we, we have to prepare, we have to prepare, but, uh. You have to know, you know, in crypto, anything can happen, right? Anything can happen, so, hey, it's happening fast, not my fault. It's not my fault, I repeat again, guys, it's not my fault if you guys. Uh, are rich early, right? So that's, that's really, 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 really super duper duper cool. So again, I'm gonna put here the link for the three times payment for those who want to opt in. For the three times payment, okay, because it is very, very key now, let me put it in. And then we'll show you what it's all about, because I'm gonna show you after this, what is gonna happen to the rest of the market, again. Remember, we know, we already said this, we had a dump, right? Put in one thousand, one, one thousand wormhole and. What is, it's like one thousand wormhole, five hundred wormhole, five hundred wormhole, three wallets, okay, one thousand, five hundred, five hundred, yeah, put in one thousand, five hundred and five hundred, so. It's like two thousand wormhole, I wanted to put in three thousand, but then I'm gonna put in one thousand wormhole, I'm sure there's, there's other ways to, to move that thing, okay? So that's good, yeah, very good, Jen, that's the way where we maximize our Solana thing, right? Maximize our Solana airdrop, especially on Camino, so, okay, what happens after this? Let me tell you what happens after this, following the cycle. If we do follow the cycle, and this, this is gonna make you guys happy, this is gonna make you guys happy, but, uh. Don't take it from me, okay? Don't take it from me, I'm just showing you what, what the cycle is capable of doing now, here it is. Now, once we go through that, guess what? Bitcoin, haha, okay, so you guys are wondering, what happens to Bitcoin, huh? Okay, I'm gonna tell you what happens, because, well, first. Is all season coming, look, after the two thousand sixteen halving, look, just before the halving, it went down, prum. Like now, like now, right? About twenty days before the halving went down, right? Prum, April second, right? And then it went up, doo-doo-doo-doo-doo-doo-doo-doo-doo. And then after the halving, what happened? It just went nowhere, it went literally nowhere, down and then pam, that's about hundred and seventeen days where it did nothing. It's about four months. So if it happens again, you're talking about after April, May, June, July, August, see, I told you August, you get your rewards, right? Told you August, you get your rewards, that was in twenty sixteen. Now you want to know, hey, what happened in twenty twenty? Let's go look here, okay, so in twenty twenty, prrr, going up, going up, going up. And then guess what? After the halving, before the halving, it went down, but this was COVID, don't count this. After, before the halving, it went up, got pumped, after the halving, it went down. And then went literally nowhere for seventy six days, just about two months. So you are taking to May, June, maybe July, so that's what I said, July, August, I think you guys will be rich again in August. For the noobs who join our class, you'll probably taste your rewards in August, for the rest of you, I know you guys will finish your money, I don't know what you're buying. You're gonna buy all the silly things in the world, I know, I get it, you guys are just the newly minted rich. And that's fine, and that's fine, okay? But you're gonna get your money again, another round, and I think it would be, it would be bigger. Yes, it would be bigger and I am already putting in like Z K Sing and Layer Zero, no. This round, if done correctly, will be bigger than the first round. If you're not doing it correctly, the first round, which is already big, will be bigger than the second round. But if you do it correctly, and this is what I said, this season is gonna change things, we have to do things differently. Is gonna be very, very different, now, what I want to show you is this, okay? So it is up to you, it is up to you, guys, you know what to do, don't make the mistakes of the past, you should see the recording of my mistakes of the past, man, I made a lot of silly mistakes, okay? I admit, this is why I gave you that recording, because I do not want you guys to make that stupid, stupid, silly mistake again. Uh, let me show you something here, now, look, I want you to see something here. Bitcoin literally went nowhere, right? After the halving, Bitcoin literally went nowhere after the halving, okay? Nowhere, and this is what we want. So like, oh no, what's gonna happen to the market? It is gonna go nowhere, yes, Bitcoin is gonna go nowhere after the halving, listen, but, look at this. This is the one from two thousand sixteen, right? Let me bring this up, no, two thousand twenty, right? But two thousand sixteen is also the same, look at this. As Bitcoin went literally nowhere, nowhere, in two thousand twenty, look, look what happened. Look what happened to the alts. The alts were going up, guys, the alts were going up. The alts were going up. Who knows what happens here? Who knows what happened then? Come on, guys, who knows what happened then? Tap it down, tap it down, the alts literally were inching up, okay? As Bitcoin went steady, now Bitcoin didn't crash, we, we can't afford a crash, we cannot afford a crash, okay? So what happened next? What happened there? Yeah, what happened next, guys? Who knows? Come on, come on, let's answer the question, so that you guys know. When you answer the question yourself, you guys know, you guys know on how to manage the cycle. What happened then? Who remembers? Yes, Uniswap, Uniswap kabumba. Uniswap dropped that big airdrop, that was a huge airdrop. Huge, huge, because in history at that time, and we had a DeFi summer, you guys remember that? The makers, the Wi-Fi, Waifu, or whatever, you know, Andre Cronier at that time. Okay, the makers, the compounds, okay, so I, I made good money on compound, you know, I made very good money on compound, that thing. I had locked that damn thing for about one year, I locked that thing for since two thousand nineteen. Those who went to class with me or two thousand nineteen, oh wait, you didn't come to class. Yeah, in two thousand nineteen, I was, I was teaching to one person. I still remember, I was teaching to one person, I said, never mind, if we're not gonna have class in the afternoon, no one is here. No one is here, and he didn't come in the afternoon, so I just stopped the class and it was quite a pity, you know, because I think during that class. I kind of was doing the compound thing, I was building into compound, you know, and that, one year later, guys, one year later, that. Big, huge bunny, right? And I have another example for you, right? Where you just go and grind and grind and grind, suddenly like, whoa, that really, really grew, right? So that was DeFi summer, that was Uniswap, so remember. What happened here was Uniswap, and I want to show you something here. This is so simple, okay, which is, and, and I want you to, to, to go and dream about it, okay? So this is an airdrop. And now this is uni, right? This is uni, so what happened after that? So let's see, I want you to see something very, very careful here, okay? This is so, so, so important, because you guys need to see this, okay? If you don't see this, this is, uh. It's not that good if you don't see this, okay? Because you need to kind of see this, okay? So let's go see this, I am gonna put this here. Okay, let's go see this now, let's go, let's go see Uniswap, what happened to Uniswap? Okay, that was the start of that show. Let's go here. Okay, so Uniswap came in at two bucks, was it? Two bucks, right? So let's go here. Okay, let's go max, so during that time, okay? January twenty one, what are they talking about? Let's go max here, guys. Okay, we'll go max here, okay, there it is. Look, so zoom, and then D five summer, it went up. And then after the halving, look what happened to uni after the halving, guys. Before the halving was like seven, eight dollars, there you got dumped. Right, after the halving got dumped, the three, and then look, it just went to forty, twenty times. Twenty times, twenty times, look, twenty times, twenty times, let me repeat that again, how many times? Two zero times, okay? Twenty times from here to here, when Bitcoin broke up after the halving, so everyone is like, what, right? So when Bitcoin did nothing, it was like steadily going up, and when, when Bitcoin broke up, it was a boom. Twenty times, okay? And then it went straight back down, back down, back down, back down, but anyway. So everyone's working for this first spam, right? So it went twenty times, so this is what I want to talk to you about, but before we talk about that, let's look at what's happened now. So yesterday, guys, yeah, let's look at the Uniswap airdrop, there it is, Uniswap airdrop here. See, historical uni up to one thousand uni, I only got four hundred uni. I only got four hundred uni, okay? I only got four hundred uni, look, so this is, this is the thing. So if you did more things, you got more, I didn't do a lot of things at that time, indexes were still new, but yeah. I did try it, I did, I did receive a small airdrop, but man, was so happy getting the airdrop, we're like, wow. It was, you never saw that kind of money at that time, now it's like normal, right? Like wormhole, I know you guys got between five thousand US dollars and hundred and fifty thousand US dollars, but during those times. These numbers were not quite big and we're so happy getting those numbers then, okay? We're so happy to be able to, to, to really show that we were getting those type of numbers. Now, let's look at another chart here, so what's happening now in crypto world? Let's see the Crypto Fear and Greed Index, where are we now? Are we, see, we're at seventy, we're still agreed, so this really hasn't gone down, you know, this is my. I guess it's good, but my kind of worry that it hasn't really gone down, maybe it's gone down here, yeah? Maybe it needs to go down here or something to fifty, hope it doesn't go down here again. But okay, this is, this is a good sign, this is a good sign, uh, that is there, uh, let's look at who is now. Leading the charge here, right? So we know it's twenty times there, and I'm gonna show you after, it's why you. Could be a millionaire, but you don't even know it, right? So Bitcoin, Ethereum, Tether, what is trending today? Okay, you got Athena, Athena was another airdrop, right? So you guys are waiting for wormhole to double, don't you? Because you saw Athena double, right? I know you guys are waiting for wormhole to double, Bitcoin SV, wow. Manta, awesome, we got Manta, right? I hope you guys bought Manta, told you guys buy Manta, a lot of Manta here, Bit Tensor, okay, Bit Tensor, these are all AI coins, okay, AI coins, Bonk. Okay, Bonk is up a little bit today. Near, okay, near is an AI, awesome, awesome, okay? This is, uh, gaming, dog with hat, and this guy is always going up, I don't know why, but I want to see the rest of the. The meme space, uh, of course, now, when you talk about memes, I'm looking at Brett, okay? So Brett has fallen down, Brett has fallen down, baby Brett has gone up, hmm. So Brett, literally, almost challenges all time high, see that? See that, kind of fail, right? Kind of fail, so that's okay, okay? And then, uh, what do we see here? Here, 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 what else do we see here? Nothing much, nothing much, so wormhole again, paying out ninety nine, 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 nine percent a week. On Solana Protocol Camino, that was what I had showed you before. But the thing now is this, ordinals, okay, let's look at the news now, ordinals drive positive momentum, this is the third part of our module classes, okay? Ordinals, NFTs and all that, but I want to find something on wormhole today, okay? Do we have something on wormhole now? Let's go and look at news.google.com. And let's go look at wormhole, how much did it talk? Well, this, this again was F D V, you know, market cap was around. Was around, uh, three billion, right? But F D V eighteen billion, I, I don't understand, it's, it looks like a little bit too big for F D V of, uh, name. So it dropped down one sixty to one, no, why did it drop down? Because you guys are selling, man, you guys are selling, I know. Why did it, they don't know, they don't know the real reason is that people like Li Ye is selling. Guys, people like Li Ye is selling, because she got so much wormhole, so he's selling, did you get wormhole? Were you here early enough to get wormhole, never mind, we're still blaming Li Ye, because he's selling for Hari Raya, okay? So wormhole committed three billion, wow, so you see the number three billion? It started trading at one sixty one and then it went down and down and down, six hundred, six, six hundred seventy four million tokens. Congratulations, everyone, for getting it, twenty five percent decrease following the airdrop, let's find out why it happened, well, let's see. Starting, yeah, went down, the price declined, yeah, one point seven one billion, wow, so, you know, of course, phishing scam. Oh, there was a phishing scam. So be careful, okay, there was a scam account with gold check mark, so be careful, guys. This is definitely, yeah, be careful, that's why we have a group, we have a group, where you want blast. Oh, you want blast, so Li Ye was kind of late. Why was Li Ye late? Li Ye didn't go to Johor Baru, had Li Ye gone to Johor Baru, he would have caught wormhole, because. I forced them to do wormhole in Johor Baru, right? Like, what the hell, man? So again, so, yeah, attack with militia, so there was a lot of scams, please be careful, okay? Spoof token wormhole emerged immediately after the launch of the airdrop. Price declined, some meme coin sees the opportunity to create a parody token, okay? Wow, the spoof token gained significant eighty three percent jump within six hours. Rising from one hundred thousand to eight point three million, diverted traders and intention for genuine wormhole token. Interesting, I didn't know that, and of course, the fading of the initial hype, hmm. So are you, so this guy saying like, you know, you know what I'm gonna do? Okay, you know what I'm gonna do? This is what I'm gonna do. I, I, I have an idea now, right? Because I'm not only Lord Vader now, guys, you guys don't know, right? I'm lord of the meme, I'm now Lord Vader, lord of the memes, okay? I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this, whenever Z K Sing comes out. And whenever Layer Zero comes out, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna find a spoof token, I'm gonna actually go trade the meme. I'm gonna actually go trade the meme coin. This is a better way of making money, right? Extra money, okay? Global crypto market crash, yeah? Yeah, 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 there was a market crash, so, uh, it didn't launch at the right time, really. Market collapse, okay? So I'm sure that one day, when the market goes up, it will go up again. So worries about liquidity emerged, investors hurried to sell off assets, resulting in shortage of buys for the, yeah, correct. Sold their tokens to minimize potential losses due to risk aversion amidst market turbulence, that's cool. Yes, we are gonna buy Z K Sing Li Ye. Remember, when Z K Sing comes out, we are gonna find the Z K Sing Li Ye and we're gonna find it on Medium, okay? And we are also gonna trade Layer Zero Li Ye, see? It's LZ, see that, you know, the token, the ticker symbol will be Layer Zero L Y, okay? This is gonna be the meme coin, this is gonna be the meme coin, yes, this is gonna be the meme coin, okay? We're just gonna trade that, I didn't know this, I'm seriously, seriously, next time, there's another big airdrop. I'm gonna find a spoof token, okay? I'm just gonna trade that spoof token, like, screw this, man. Okay, so this is what's happening now, now, let me tell you what's happening now, so we saw just now. Where are you now? Where do you go next? Let me give you a situation now, we saw. When Uniswap was, uh, first listed, it did go up to about four to six and then got dumped again to two. And then went up to eight and then dumped again to two and then went up for, went up twenty times to forty, right? So we know for a fact, it's not gonna be a straight up, of course, gonna scare you, but a lot of you. Are scared unless you join me, then you learn how not to be scared, we know that for a fact that Uniswap went up twenty times. Okay, now, look, Uniswap is in the first, I would say, the first generation of airdrops, okay? First gen, this is Uniswap. In twenty twenty one, who knows what was the second gen? Do you guys remember what was the second generation of airdrops? Who knows? Who knows the second generation of airdrops? Who knows? Who knows the second generation of airdrops? You guys know, right? And you're gonna, you're gonna learn a lot of things tomorrow. You're gonna learn how I found the next D Y D X, yes, we have found the next D Y D X, okay? I mean, like sixty five K US here, so, look. If you are in early here, this generation, okay? At one point in time, you are probably sitting on a twenty bagger, you know, twenty X. If you are in D Y D X, although it makes more money than this guy. What was the percentage gain of D Y D X? Who knows? What was the percentage gain of deep? Because I remember from low to high, who knows, how many times, how many times? Who knows the percentage gain of D Y D X from low to high? I'll tell you guys tomorrow, you will know tomorrow, you all know tomorrow, but I'm gonna quiz you guys, do you guys know? Because we're gonna use the same formula to find D Y D X, isn't that great? The same formula to find D Y D X is gonna use, we're gonna be used tomorrow to find the next D Y D X. And tomorrow, you guys have a chance, maybe the noobs, they're too new, but. I, I don't think they can do it, I don't think they can do it, I don't think they should do it until they're familiar, they can do it like two, three weeks later, right? But for the rest of you, which are really, really smart, you probably can do it as early as tomorrow night, okay? As early as tomorrow night, don't miss tomorrow night. Hey, anyone outside want to join, please go up there, okay? Don't miss tomorrow night, I'm gonna put the link again here, yeah, that is the three payment link, okay? Anyway, so what is it now? So you see, D Y D X at that time only went up. DYDX at that time only went up from seven, twenty seven, right? Was it twenty seven, twenty eight? Let's see. Let's see, was it twenty seven or twenty eight dollars or twenty? I, I even forgot that. Let's see. I know it was dumped to six. Came out itself, was probably dumped to six, okay? So let's see how much it traversed. Uh, I'm gonna go here and was it twenty seven? All time high. No, it's not this, not this. This is not, this is not the one, no, no, can't. It cannot be that. It cannot be that. No, 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 much higher. Went to actually twenty seven. So the DYDX run only did like five times. Let's say five, it's not even five times that. It's like four X plus, okay? Four X plus. So do you see? The first generation can do twenty. The second generation can do this. So if you are in a first generation airdrop now, first and the generation airdrop now, guess what? You can be a millionaire. Let me show you an example. Ringgit millionaire, okay? Ringgit millionaire. Let me show you a simple example where you can actually go lepa. You know, shake leg like this. You shake leg, ning, 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 ah, and make money, okay? Shake leg and make money. Let me show you. I gotta be dramatic with you guys. No, you guys don't believe me. Let's say you got ten thousand wormhole. Let's just say. Let's just say you got ten thousand wormhole. I think it goes to two. I think it can go to two, like six billion, maybe even ten billion. If it's ten billion, it's gonna go to three. I don't see it going beyond that. FDV is full eighteen, so I can see it going to ten, okay? I can see it going to ten. Ten means three dollars, okay? Ten billion market cap means three dollars, by the way. Ten million market cap, okay? It's now three. So I think it can go to ten. I think it can definitely go to six, 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 go to two. But anyway, say you got ten thousand wormhole, okay? Some of you got ten thousand, some of you got more than ten thousand wormhole. So let's go calculate what I mean here. So you have ten thousand wormhole. And you time this by one twenty. That's twelve thousand US dollars, right? Okay? If you got ten thousand wormhole and you time it by one twenty US. No, two dollars US, two dollars US. Two dollars US, sorry. That's twenty thousand dollars, right? That's twenty thousand dollars. Now, times this by twenty, guys. Can you times this by twenty? If you time this by twenty here, you got two hundred forty K, okay? Two hundred forty K US dollars. If you time this by twenty here, you got four hundred K US dollars. You know what I mean? You know what I mean? Literally, you just hodl, you just hodl Uniswap. Hopefully you didn't panic when it went down. And there were twice when it went down, but you would have probably panicked. But those strong hodlers, okay? Those diamond hands who can really hold can hold. Now look, at two hundred and forty K ringgit, how much is it in ringgit? You are already a ringgit billionaire. That's what I said. Most of you, you know, some of you, I don't know which token it is. I can guess. I can guess which token you, you should hodl, but if you can hodl the right airdrop, let me tell you, it is literally gonna make you a millionaire. And we have the ringgit to thank for it because the ringgit has tanked so much. In my time, it was like four ten. It was boring. Okay, there, one point two. Look at that, one point one two eight million ringgit. This one is like, why? Well, this one is even more. Guys, this is like one point eight million ringgit. One point eight million ringgit, okay? One point eight eight oh, okay, million. One point eight eight oh million and one point one two eight million. So do you see? Without even realizing that, most of you who are in the first generation literally are already millionaires. Are already millionaires. But if you go sell your bag and go changing it, I don't know. I don't know. Then, then you lose that millionaire status, see? So some of you are already millionaires and that's the fact. That is the fact, okay? So that's what I wanted to tell you tonight. So which is the coin? I don't know. I don't know. I haven't made a decision, but you know, probably one of the, 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 the airdrops, I'm gonna just hodl it. I am gonna just hodl it, okay? So you see, if you get ten K of an airdrop, and now we know that the numbers of the airdrops get literally higher. And tomorrow, you'll probably know which one you wanna hold, right? Tomorrow, you'll probably know which one you wanna hold, which one you want to double down, because I'm gonna show you the secret. I'm gonna show you which one is likely gonna be the next big airdrop, okay? So that's the easy way to do it. That's the easy way to do it. Now, if you wanna go and buy a BMW that depreciates, you wanna go and buy uh the Porsche Macan that depreciates, although the new Porsche Macan looks good. The new Porsche Macan looks good. Or you buy the Aston Martin, I don't know. Why would you want to buy an Aston Martin? It's made by hand, right? Like, why would you want to buy a car that's made by hand? I would need it to be done by a robot under full automation, okay? I don't want some human hand making my car. That's crazy, okay? Then it becomes very, very difficult, okay? So tomorrow we will go into the exercise where we see where is the group of airdrops that if you hodl can make you a millionaire? Because you didn't realize it, right? That's why I had to come up with this session for you guys. So that you already can realize it, because look at it. Look at Uniswap. Twenty times. Twenty times, guys. Twenty times. Where are you gonna get this? Twenty times. No joke, no joke. And that's why we said that when you want to go from one thousand, when we need the best way, literally the best way to go from one thousand, but you can't sell. The best way to go from one thousand to one million is through airdrops. And yes, it is possible. Because think of it. If you have another Uniswap and there will be one or two that actually do that. By actually do that, they deliver for you the right volume and they deliver our textbook twenty times gains. This is a fact. This is a fact. There will be. But the problem is, a lot of people are gonna sell. I'm not telling you, you should sell some of it, but a lot of people are gonna end up selling and are gonna miss that run. So you need to ask yourself, what is your airdrop strategy again? How are you gonna determine whether that is going to uh make you a millionaire or not? Because a lot of people will be asking, should I be hodling? Well, it really depends on your psychology, okay? So tomorrow, don't miss it. Uh, because once you go to the class tomorrow, you will know that an airdrop of a certain class really deserves due consideration. I will tell you, okay? I'll tell tomorrow. Do you guys wanna see it? Do you guys wanna see that class or not? Who wants to see that class of airdrops that may take you to a million? Where you can get a big allocation and they might take you to, eh, eh, who wants to see, guys? Come on, come on. Who wants to see? Come on. Who wants to see? Who wants to see that class of airdrop, guys? Who wants to see? Who, who, who wants to see? Come on, come on, come on. Who wants to see? Write it down. Say, yes, 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 I want to see. Yes, yes, yes. Type it down, guys. Type it down, guys. Yes, 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 I want to see. Okay, type it down. Type, 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 type down. Type it down, type it down. Come on, come on, come on. We need to know who wants to see this. We need to know who wants to see. Who else wants to see? Uh, we need, and that, I'm not gonna show it to you because there's only one single person who wants to see. Who wants to see? Because you guys are gonna, oh no, what airdrop is this? Okay, who wants to see? Come on, guys. Type yes, yes, yes. Type yes, if you want to see the class of airdrops. You wanna see the class of airdrop. Who wants to see? Let me show you this class of airdrops, okay? Let me show you what I tell you. I call it the king. I call it the king. King Arthur. Tomorrow, I'm gonna introduce you to the king. I'm gonna introduce you to the king and he has a magic potion and it's behind here. You see, I cannot move it. I cannot move it. I can only move it tomorrow when I have my PowerPoint. I can only move it tomorrow when I have my PowerPoint. And then I cannot, see, I can, I can, I cannot show it tonight. See, this is not PowerPoint, okay? This is not PowerPoint. Okay, so remember, don't miss the class tomorrow. It is at eight thirty, okay, guys? Eight thirty. And for those of you who haven't joined our class, I don't know, what are you doing, guys? Ask my guys, hey, this, this is something real, okay? As I said, this is the fastest ROI ever on record, because I do not know anyone, seriously. I do not know anyone who can deliver such a massive value in such a short time. And tomorrow, you will know, I'm moving back to my house tomorrow. I'm moving back to my house in Uptown tomorrow, so then uh we will have a bigger place for classes. We will also have a place for our uh, our, what do you say? Our, this one, right? Our uh bootcamp, okay? We'll have a good place for our bootcamp. Uh, because you know, when we go on the twenty seventh to twenty eighth, the class will start in the morning and then they will start in the evening. I will tell you tomorrow what it is. So join us, join us, join us, join us, join us. It is the king, guys. It is the king. It is the king, okay? It is the king. So let's go here. So join us on strike, guys. Join us on strike. If you miss tomorrow, man, you will regret it for the rest of your lives. Okay, guys, any questions? Any questions? Any questions, guys? Any question? It is about Excalibur. Yes, there is an Excalibur there, okay? Excalibur is there, Excalibur is there. And this is really where I think, because you know, in the second season, there, there's just too many things happening, right? Reality, there's just too many things happening. We gotta be more selective. We gotta go for the really, really, really ones that can take us from here to here. From here to here. Theoretically, like Uniswap, right? From one thousand to one million. That's what we need to do. And that's what we will do tomorrow. So don't miss it, guys. Don't miss it, guys. Don't miss it. Okay, guys, any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Anything? Uh, just join the Telegram group, okay? Just join my Telegram group and can ask questions there, but don't miss the class tomorrow, okay? I think, guys, it's very simple. If you miss the class tomorrow, you will regret again. I mean, how much of evidence do we need, okay? Let me tell you some, let me tell something, let me tell you something frank. Just ask anyone here. You mean any other guru, they tell you about the price. In the history, blah, 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 did this, blah, 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 did this, blah, 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 this, correct or not, Li Ye? Blah, 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 did this. Blue, 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 did this. Red, 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 did this, blah, blah, blah. And, and God knows how many years it was. And then you see it recycle, 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 recycle again, blah, 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 did this, blue, 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 this, red, 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 did this. Again, blah, 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 did this, blue, 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 this, red, 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 did this. Hey, guys, we don't live in the past. Who cares? Nobody cares. We live now in the future. What do I do? I say, I still say the pasta, but I say, because in the past, we are now going to apply it in the future. And I quote in the future now, and guess what? And then we quote Sensei is, hey, guys, come on, tell me. Who can quote a success that came one week before? Who can quote a success that happened yesterday? Seriously, what's your referral? Oh, look what happened yesterday. And what's your referral? Oh, look what happened last week. And yet you guys don't understand it. You guys like to go with the gurus who quote something like one year ago, blah, 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 blue, 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 red, 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 green, green, right? I don't understand you guys, you know. I really do not understand you guys. Because things will change. Crypto is difficult because I need to readjust the uh readjust the, 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 the schedule, right? I need to readjust the schedule. I need to readjust what I teach, see? And that's why I do not have time to rest on my laurels like your other, other gurus which quote blah, 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 blue, 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 red, 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 green, green. Yeah, see, even Rosaline Norden knows that, right? But we quote, nah, it kind of happened. Now you can go in the group and you can see it. And that's what a lot of people, uh, you know, people don't understand. A lot of people say it's too good to be true, but never mind. They are gonna miss this. So I hope you guys don't miss this. Okay, guys? Any other questions, guys? Any other questions? Because I have something at nine now. See, I'm here in, still in the office because pursuing opportunities, but the good thing is that starting tomorrow, my house is just a short walk, five minute walk away there. So a lot of things can be done in our class between collapse and the office. And I think that's great. A very tight integration, okay? And of course, this is the best place for food, okay? Guys, this is literally the best place for food. This is the best place for food. So this is awesome, guys. So again, don't miss this class. Don't miss this class tomorrow. And I'm also gonna see you on the twenty seventh. On the twenty seventh and the twenty eighth, where we have day class. And twenty eighth, we have day. And you know what? We have night class here. We have night class. Yes, we're gonna have night class here, okay? We're gonna have night class here in Uptown. This will be an Uptown day. This will be night. It's the same thing in JB, right? Because I think that work, I think that works. So if you want that luck, that, 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 that power, that power of the dark side, the power of the dark side that brings you money, hope to see you on the twenty seventh and twenty eighth. Don't miss class tomorrow, okay, guys? Any questions? If there are not any questions, thank you very much. And tomorrow, then I hope, I pray that you guys also make the right decision to hodl the right coin that will take you literally to a million, okay? Literally to a million, anyway. Uh, selamat hari raya, maaf zahibatin. Jangan lupa klas iso, yeah, but anyways, selamat hari raya, maaf zahibatin, subuh to all of you. Uh, it's gonna be a long holiday, but I just want you to do things during the holiday. Yes, you can tell your watch, senses, you please call my holiday. Wow. Holiday, give me homework tomorrow. Of course, because we want Li Ye to be successful, okay? We want Li Ye to be successful. But again, also, I hope that you guys can make it, who can make it to Uptown, do make it, okay? Do make it to Uptown because I think it's very important, because once you feel the environment, you will also want to do things, okay? Thank you very much again. Selamat hari raya, maaf zahibatin. I'm gonna see you guys tomorrow. Okay, guys, bye. See you. Bye. See you, see you, guys. See you, see you, see you. Wait, I don't even know how to turn this off, okay? Okay, nah, nah, I don't even know how to turn it. One moment, let me, let me turn this off, okay? Let me turn my live streaming off. Anyway, I'm gonna say it again. Bye, guys. Okay, very bye, bye, bye. See you soon, guys. Bye.